I'd like to call the Village North Final Link Board of Trustees meeting to order Monday, November 2nd. Due to the state of emergency related to COVID-19, the village will have limited seating at the board meeting. In addition to the board meeting being available on cable channel 980, you are also able to dial in and listen and speak through the phone. If you would like to call in, please dial 920-322-6120 between 5:45 and 5:55 on the day of the meeting. Audience members are requested to sign in on the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Citizens may be given the opportunity to speak during the discussion of items listed on the agenda and are allowed only three minutes for comments. Disruptive discussion and profanity will not be allowed. Rule of call of officers.
Duffy.
Here.
Arney.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Will.
Stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. See, we have no citizens moving down to announcements. Any announcements? Nick, what time are the polls open tomorrow?
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
All right. You don't do your civic duty and vote. Residents' business and staff reports, anything for the course?
I put that on there incorrectly. It's not supposed to be on there.
All right. Library, Heather.
Oh, thank you. Things are going well, as expected, anyway. So our October, we had 134 in-building appointments and 450 for curbside, separate curbsides. So, yeah, things are going well and we just like to see the increases in people utilizing us. We had also seven new users in October. So, things are going well.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you. Administrator, Nick.
Thank you. Between finalizing the budget, putting that together in the absentee voting in our offices, the last couple of weeks have been very busy here. We had, I put in the weekly report, but we had about 1,470 absentee ballots either go out or be voted in the office here. Of those, approximately 1,470, we have 1,399, I believe, returned. So, right now, we have 1,399 absentee ballots in our possession to be cast tomorrow. We're expecting probably another thousand voters at the polls tomorrow. So, it's been very, very busy at our office the last couple of weeks due to that, along with just getting prepared for that. We have a lot of poll workers that are helping and putting in a lot of hours with all of that. So, thank you to all of them and Lori in our office doing the lion's share of that work. We'll all breathe a sigh of relief, I think, when this is over because it's been extremely busy. So hopefully everything goes well tomorrow. Get out and vote. We're open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Absentee ballots that we received that are mailed back in the mail tomorrow, if we get them before 8:00 PM tomorrow, they'll still be counted. Other than that, I guess, yeah, just finishing up the budget, we've been getting the numbers, I keep telling you, you know, we get these numbers late October. We got, I think, all but one of them so far. So, we got one today. So those things all start to come together and we'll talk about that later during our budget discussion.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Police Department, Darren.
I passed around, I had Nick pass around two monthly reports. I think I missed the last meeting, which is why there's two instead of one. I've been also addressing in my weekly report to you guys the last couple of weeks, we've been extremely busy. We're up to now seven deaths that are being investigated right now. And there was a sexual assault case from 2012 that we ended up reopening and made a referral to the district attorney's office for charges on that case. So, the officers have been extremely busy, not only with the calls that they have coming in day by day, but also with investigations. I also wanted to mention and point out that November 15th starts winter parking season. So, we've been sending out notices on, we've been sending out reminders. We have notices on our Facebook page as well as our website that explains the even odd parking system that we have in place. I just want to remind residents that regardless of whether or not there's snow on the ground, the regulations are in place and they will be enforced. Again, we're trying to create habits so that when there is snow and the plows need to get out and do their job, they can. So, ask everybody to please keep that in mind and pay attention to that. That's all I have.
Chief, will you give a grace period, a little transition time, just notices before you actually start issuing tickets? I know you did that last year.
Yeah, yeah, we always do. And I hate to give like a timeframe because if on November 15th or 16th we get hit with six inches of snow, we're gonna have to do something a little different.
Sure.
But we try to give people a friendly grace period where we put reminders on the cars and let them know.
Thank you. Thanks, Darren. Fire EMS, Jake.
Thank you. I handed out a monthly incident list from October. It's easily the busiest month our department, I think, has ever seen as far as 911 EMS and fire goes. So we ran 150 calls last month. I also emailed out the monthly reports to you guys a couple of weeks ago for the previous two months and hope you receive them. Adam and I have been working with billing companies to discuss different options that we may have, and I'll get into a little bit more detail later on when we talk about the EMS fund. We still have to meet with LifeQuest that's scheduled for the end of this week, and then we'll have everybody's numbers in. And then Tim Rogers applied for the firehouse subs grant and we got that awarded. It was just under $15,000, which will include a hose and gear dryer as well as thermal imaging cameras, which allowed us to modify our CIP for the fire department, which I will discuss later as well. We also got word this past week that our FEMA grant was not awarded for radios. So that's where we are at right now.
Anything else, Jake?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Public Works, Darren.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Parks are closed for the season now. With the weather we started having last week, we were worried about freeze-ups, so we closed them a little bit early. So as of right now, the first Saturday in November is usually when we close them, but they are closed for the season right now. Today was the last day for curbside brush pickup for the year. We will be back out after the Christmas holiday doing Christmas tree pickup, but curbside brush pickup today was the last day. We are still out doing yard and leaf collection, and that will continue through November 16th. Crew has also been assisting with setting up for voting. We made some guards for tables and stuff like that, and those seem to fit the tables really well. And then the sweeper will be out as much as possible until weather no longer cooperates with us.
Is the street sweeper working pretty good, the new one?
Yes.
Good, good.
Yeah, it's a little different design than the old one. Same manufacturer as the old one. The other one had two engines on it. This one is a single engine with a drive system that runs the sweeper.
So, is it like more efficient? Does it work better that way or does it work better the old one?
It's just new design.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Darren. All right. Consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following village board meeting from October 19th, 2020. Approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on the respective funds as indicated. General Fund, $21,042.18. Library Fund, $649.07. EMS Fund, $2,938.43. Capital Projects, $64,530.52. Water Department, $6,719.40. Wastewater Department, $1,174.68. Stormwater Fund, $486.47. Community Development Authority, TIF, $445,367.90 for a grand total of $542,908.65. And also approve the following operator's license for Rebecca Husted for Dollar General. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Will, second by Price, to approve the consent agenda as read. Are there any questions on bills or anything? John?
Just one on page five. Mies Plumbing for the curb and gutter, what?
It actually was, that's not a correct, curb and gutter is incorrect. Mies Plumbing actually did a curb stop. I think that accidentally got quoted. There was also another one in here for curb and gutter.
I saw another one, yes.
Yeah, good catch. So this one was quoted incorrectly. I did catch it and I actually made a note on the one Mike signed for him. But it was actually what happened, the new house that were actually the annexation, they had to hook up curb water. Their curb stop was busted. They had to dig out sidewalk and replace the curb stop. So that's actually what it's for. It's not for curb and gutter.
Okay.
So, yeah, good find.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Moving down to administrative discussion and possible action on the general operating debt service fund, capital fund, project fund, spillman library, outdoor rec, EMS fund and tax increment, district one and two, CDA budgets, and setting the tax levy for fiscal year 2021.
That's a mouthful. All right. So I sent out the information that I had sent, delivered to your homes and just kind of, I really didn't tell you where to put it in your binders because it's kind of summarizing stuff. So just kind of walk through that stuff page by page, and that, the first page being is 2021 CIP. It's more of a detail than what you're used to looking at, the five-year CIP we reviewed. This is just the 2021 detail because that's really what we're approving with this budget process. So, I just kind of walked through that and make some notes. So the administrative equipment, does everybody have that page before I get too creative? Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize for the size print. It says 2021 on the upper left, expenses, CIP requests, page 15 on the bottom. All right. So administrative equipment, the copier, that didn't change. The community center tiles, 2,000, that didn't change. Library, paint the exterior, 9,500, that didn't change. Village garage, we had the waste oil burner, the overhead door and the AED, that didn't change.
The oil burner, oh, there's the old one. The one we're replacing, oh, there, oh, that old one.
That was put in back in the early 90s.
The, you good, Mike?
Yeah.
Municipal building, nothing. Police Department, 39541, that's a squad and tasers. That did not change from our first discussions. This one, the next one, fire department, that changed. Jake alluded to it earlier. There was another $7,500 that was in there. If you look in your five-year CIP for thermal imaging camera, and if you want to maybe elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, I can. So with that grant, we were awarded, we're actually gonna be receiving three of them. So we're gonna be able to hold off on thermal imaging cameras for quite some time in any sort of capital improvement plan and/or budget. So, it eliminates the 7,500 out of that.
Nice.
I have a question on the radios. You talked about, we didn't get funding for it.
Correct.
As soon as you can apply again for it.
We'll be in for the next cycle of AFG, which will open probably in like March or April next year. It depends on funding and whatnot, but typically it's March or April, and then we'll reapply again.
We didn't hit, maybe it would make us more.
Uh, no. I don't think so. You know, they pick and choose. We made it to the last segment of evaluations of the grant. So, you know, it just depends on, you know, if somebody wrote a paragraph a little bit better or, you know, essentially they read through them and depict on, you know, whether it's the literature or whatever is written, and whatever sounds best, I guess. So, just, we'll typically, year to year, we rewrite the entire grant. So we'll pick through it again and try to make it better for next time.
I think we're forgetting the thermal camera, I think, doing the staff and getting that approved and the work to put on the radios.
Yeah, and hopefully it pans out, definitely help the budgets in the next couple of years. So, yep.
All right, then, moving down, public works equipment, we could skip. Public Works vehicles. So if you recall, we talked about this originally, there was a $30,000 lawnmower in here, and then in a couple of years, there was a skid steer snow blower attachment. And we discussed that, John, I think you had brought something up with that, and we looked at possibly moving the snow blower attachment up because then we were allowing ourselves to buy a zero turn mower for $15,000 instead of a $30,000 mower that could also plow the sidewalks. So that's what we did. We bumped that up as we discussed at the board meeting when we talked about the CIP. So we moved that $7,000, which was out a couple of years, up to 2021. And then we moved that $30,000 mower out and put in this $15,000 zero turn mower. All in all, that, it goes down 23 from saving the, from 30 to 7, but then we add the 15 back in, so it really saves about $8,000. And then it also saves that purchase of $30,000, you know, pushes that out a little further. We'll still need to buy those type of mowers, but not as many. So we have, currently, we have two or three, three of those. So now we'll be down to two of those type of mowers, then a skid steer attachment. So that'll be a little bit more cost effective that way. So that's all in all, down $8,000. Street maintenance and resurfacing.
I went back to the inspectors, SUV.
Yep.
I mean, we talked a little about that, and the past few months, they hand me down from the police department and you chose not to do that.
Well, we didn't choose not to do it. We don't have the option.
You don't have the option, because why don't we have the option?
Because they were, if you recall the discussion, their next one is getting moved to the unmarked, right? They don't, they won't have one available next year.
I mean, couldn't we wait a year?
No.
No.
This was, if you recall, we actually, we're gonna put this in the budget last year.
Yep.
It was approved, and I, it was my fault. I didn't end up putting it in the final CIP.
San Pablo is becoming not safe to drive.
It's really rough.
I mean, can we get much of a vehicle for $8,000 for an SUV?
We can get adequate vehicle for what we need for that.
I believe the police department is getting rid of a vehicle now. They're getting more trade-in than what we were going to spend.
I don't have the number in front of me, but we're getting a double-digit trade. So, if they can get something for $8,000 that meets their needs, it's probably a better deal for the village. How long do you estimate that will last the village? Eight years?
I'm hoping for that eight to 10-year range.
Thank you.
At the Apollo that he's been running now for the last?
Several years.
Oh, it's gotta be six years, was a hand-me-down, and it's definitely developed issues.
Okay. Okay. Then moving on to street maintenance and resurfacing, $120,000. Again, I'm just gonna make that, my plug here about these roads are what we're planning on doing next year. Most likely, these are the roads we will do, but if comes springtime, something else ends up looking like it's, probably needs more attention. I just don't, sometimes we get a lot of questions about if we change a road and the other because of certain things. So I just want to make that plug here, that we may change some of these. Likely not, but. Street construction, Bessehat Avenue, that's just finishing that up next year.
Nick, sorry.
Jeffrey Court, we talked about, I had concerns because of that.
That one won't get changed.
That intersection was concerned for many.
Yeah, that one won't get changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Street construction, Bessehat Avenue, $425,000. That is to finish that process. And that's the lion's share of the general fund expenses always in that second year. A lot of utility funds being used this year. Parks, there was a change here. It's down $9,000, and the reason for that is, if you recall, I think Darren had mentioned it in his weekly report a couple of weeks ago at the meeting. Optimist Park roof, Village Park roof, Village Park roof was put in the budget at $16,000 for next year in CIP. Optimist Park roof was put in for $7,000 this year. They flip-flopped that. Our village crew did Village Park, and they did it for under the $7,000, actually. And so then next year, in 2021, instead of doing, being Village Park for 16, it is now Optimist Park for $7,000. So, that's a savings of $9,000 from what you saw the first time. Did I explain that? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And then Village Pool AED, $2,000. That's what we have. The original plan you would have looked at would have, was about 20, was it 24.5, $24,500 more? If you look back at your CIP and you look at the general fund borrow, the debt obligation portion of that, it was, would have been 789, I believe. So, all in all, we cut about 24.5 out of what you saw the first time, and I think those were all the points we had discussed.
Nick, are we still doing the playground equipment at Lemieux?
So that is, was already borrowed for, okay? So, as we mentioned, we had the, we have that money. We borrowed for it, this last borrow. So, next year, we'll look at doing it again, depending on where COVID's at and what, how things are going. And as we mentioned, I think, yes, we're looking at doing it. We definitely are looking at doing it. But before we move forward with that process, we'll definitely talk to the board about it.
Okay. John? There was discussion about the flight poll. I know I hate to bring up an old item.
It's a good question. So what happened, and I thought this was reported, the portion that we may have been responsible for, the police benevolent association actually stepped in and said they would cover that, correct? Yes. So, there's no cost to the village. Again, at some point, now that being that we don't really have any funds involved, I don't know how much, we probably maybe still want the optimists to come and just talk to us about it.
Right. One time, the board had asked that we present the flag that we'd be putting on it. That's in the works to be done.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, though?
Yes. All right. Any other questions for Nick?
I know it's been a long time since we talked about capital, but I think we hit everything that we had discussed, so that's where that's at now. If everyone's good with the capital portion of it, then I'd like to move on to the summary. It says 2020 summary on top, it's page 16 on the bottom. So this is kind of the document that, you know, internally, we were reviewing the entire time, looking at where are we at, and I've kind of been alluding to this with the board saying, you know, this is, we're starting to see our picture. This is really what shows us our picture. So, you'll see the first section there being revenue, and we'll talk about this use of fund balance a little bit later, but, you know, we put all these revenues in here, our 2021 budget revenues, and we don't do anything for use of fund balance right away internally. And as you move down, all of these other numbers are, so moving below that, that library wants minus tax, and then the property tax, library levy, that's what we're levying out of our levy for the library. Same with the property tax for the EMS levy. The debt service levy, the 649, and we talked that that reduced by about 17, 16, 7 this year from last year. And then the 765, 321 for capital projects, that's the borrow. So there's actually, so this is the revenue side of it, right? So we have to have the borrow in here, and then further down, we'll get into the expenses. So, total, grand total revenue, 6,543,358. Okay? If you look at that, it's $300,000 and $334,000 higher in revenues than it was last year. There's a number of variables that cause that, some of it being use of fund balance. There's $100,000 there and a number of other things that you can, you know, see for yourself in there where there's increases. Moving down to the expenses, there's not really a lot to talk about there because those are all the individual departments we've talked about already. As you scroll down, and then, except for the one number you'll see is contingency, about six lines down for $160,000. So, and I'll talk about those numbers now, the use of fund balance and contingency. So when we get all done with this budget, we get our expenditure restraint, we calculated it internally at 1.88% was our, so basically our budget from last year to this year could increase by 1.88%, and we would still receive that $44,000, $46,000 payment from the state for keeping our budget from not raising any higher than that. So, we actually got our number middle of last week, I believe, and it actually was 1.9%. That's what it calculated out. We had calculated it 1.88. So what we did is we, on the spreadsheet in the background, we plugged in 1.8. We just want to have a little bit of a buffer zone there. So we put in 1.8, and in order, we put in $160,000 of additional expenses in our budget to get up to that 1.8, okay? In order to balance our budget, then we had to plug in $154,000 of use of fund balance to balance that out. So, by looking at that, you can see there's about a $6,000 difference there. So if you took those two numbers out, we were in the black by about $6,000, all in all, with our whole general fund budget at the end of the day. So that's great news. I mean, there's been years where we've approved budgets that have been $60,000 in the hole or in the red, and being comfortable with that because we generally aren't fully staffed for, you know, all departments for the entire year. So, that's where those two numbers play in. But I just wanted to point those two out, and then we can just, I'll keep moving down the expense page here and get to the end here where we really want, you know, and look at where we're at with numbers. So, total general fund, 100 account at the bottom there. You can see expenses are grand total up about 1.38%. That's a little bit, it's a little inaccurate because of the fund balance and the contingency expense. If you took those back out of there, I think it was, it was less than that as far as the increase. And then moving down, all the way to that total revenue, it's about, it's just underneath that total fund 100. Total revenue over expense, fund 100 account, so that's just the 100, which when I say 100, that's just general fund. It doesn't include some of the other enterprise funds. So you can see that there is a zero in the 2021 column, and that is, we made that zero by our two numbers, fund balance and expenditure restraint. That number I was telling you was about $6,000 in the positive prior to us putting those other, plugging those other numbers in. Does that make sense? All right. Then moving down, then we, the EMS and all those other, they're, because they're not 100 funds, get added back in, and we see there's a plus of about $3,800, and that's due to the EMS fund being a little bit overfunded. Now, looking at the estimated actuals, you can see that for 2020, total revenue over expense, we have about $256,000 remaining. That means we underspent or took in more revenue, right? I mean, the, we zeroed out use of fund balance and we zeroed out the contingency in that estimated actual. So, we have $256,000 left over. Our estimated actual is saying that for 2020. If you look back at 2019, it's a very similar number, 253,000. So, in that, you can attribute to staffing. I mean, there's, a lot of it is staffing that, you know, we don't have full staff throughout the entire year, and we still budget for full staff. Now, at some point, you know, we could probably change that and not budget full staff, but I would prefer we just err on the side of caution there. So, all in all, 2020 looks like we are going to be in very good shape, healthy shape, carry over some fund balance, and probably move some of that, as we did last year, into that capital improvement fund based on our fund balance policy. So, all in all, everything looks really good here on the summary. Any questions about that portion?
Mike?
A 1% tax increase or levy increase comes out to what, 15 grand?
14-ish.
14-ish and stuff? If we were to come in at zero, you know, we'd have to come up with $15,000. And we could do that if we lowered our contingency by, from 160 to 145. I know that gives you more of a buffer for years to come, but other schools going to zero, I mean, less than zero, Conley's just a little less than zero. Our tax rate, I think, is enough out here in the village, and I wouldn't mind seeing us coming at zero. I know we agreed to 1% last time, but it was actually more than we originally thought, but I'll see how the rest of the board feels about that. I mean, it's, it looks like we can afford to do it. I don't think it would hurt us that much in the future, but I want to throw that out there.
Anybody have any comments? Chuck?
I guess I, I feel that the proposed increase is small enough that it's something that if we don't do, it's lost forever. You know, I don't feel, I would not be in favor of that.
Darren? Anybody else? John?
Just a question. We had the discussion, I brought it out last meeting, that, hey, let's keep it at zero, and then we got done at the end, and everyone agreed, including yourselves. My question would be, what changed your mind? What changed? Because we felt, you know, zero versus the one, which was about 14,000, which is something doable. What, in your mind, other than, obviously, you said the other entities around are going to zero. Was that what changed your mind?
Originally, we, we, we thought it was going to be a little, little less money. It was like a dollar for every 100,000, and that being, it's just $10 every 100,000. So, it's 20 bucks. But I look at the park or house out here, a $200,000 home, you're paying 1,800 and 50 just for the village's portion, just the park or house out here. The numbers, I didn't realize that we had, you know, we plugged in 160 for contingency just to show that we're spending that money. That's $160,000 of a portion.
It's not, well, because we're offsetting that with $154,000 of revenue.
Right. You're offsetting that revenue.
You could just forget about those two numbers, really, when you're talking about the tax rate. So, i, i, if you take those two numbers out, we're $6,000 in the, in the plus.
You plug it in 154, so that allows us to spend it if we would like to spend that, if we would need it, right?
But it's not, it does not affect the tax rate at all. Those two numbers do not, they are strictly in there to maximize our expenditure restraint.
Because he says we're going to use the fund balance, right? So, we would have to use money that we have on hand if we were going to spend $160,000.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Just sort of, just for discussion.
Just the example that you gave, just so comparison, you said for the one house of the 200, 220, you said it was 1,850. What would've it been, or what is it? Can we do a comparison because you're...
Sure. So, I mean, we, we can get to that. Yeah, okay. So, so, a $100,000 house, and I, we can double that. So, a $100,000 house right now is $914 in taxes. So, we double that to 1,836, right?
Yep.
Or 1,828, I'm sorry. The next, the, the proposed budget is $9.24, so 92, 924, so 1,848.
So, it was 20 bucks for the year?
Yes. And if I may?
Yes.
The, in, I know we talked about this at the last meeting a little bit. The, the reason that I feel that this is the correct way to go for a couple of things, but the main reason being is that we raised our, our per capita for EMS by $3. And it's, it's hard for me to consider that the general fund should absorb that. That is an additional expense of 15, almost $16,000 to the village taxpayers that otherwise gets absorbed in the rest of the general fund budget. So, I, I think we've been talking about that for a number of years, and I think it's, at least, we're not, we're not gaining all of it back by doing this, but we're getting most of it.
Ann, did you have any?
Well, I guess the question is, I don't understand how that relates to the, us raising the tier. Doesn't seem like a reason for us to raise the regular taxes. I mean, or is that 3% increase about that increase?
Well, the 3%, the $3 raise
Right.
adds about 15, $16,000 of expense to our general fund. Because our general fund has to pay that to the EMS fund.
Okay.
Right? Because we have to pay for our, our per capita, just like the other entities do.
Right, 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 right.
So, that's a expense to our general fund of $16,000.
Okay.
So, to replenish that, in my opinion, we should pass at least a portion of that out along to the taxpayer. Otherwise, if we don't do that, in reality, in my eyes, the rest of the departments are, are funding that.
Got it. So, it's included in this 1.2?
It is included, and this includes that right now, yes.
I mean, I mean, it would be great if we come in at zero. I mean, I think people would appreciate that. I know, you know, I mean, everybody's struggling, so if we could do it, I mean, it would be nice if we could. So, Ann, you would be against that, or going in?
I don't have a strong opinion either way. Just talking personally, I guess I would take $10 and $0 are similar. They don't, I don't have a strong opinion, I guess, one way or the other. I mean, I kind of agree with Chuck that if we don't, you know, it's difficult to kind of get this back once we lose it. But I also understand what you're saying, is that everybody's sort of struggling. But I guess I would kind of agree with Chuck that, that I think we get this included. I don't think it's a huge burden on the taxpayers, $10.
Anybody else? Oh, John, sorry.
Looking at this one, looking at the budget, the big question came in the EMS was such, it was in a hole so much that the general fund was picking up a good portion of this money at the expense of our taxpayers. And that was one of the things, we got to get that, we got to equalize that out. So, because it's a service that we provide to the community, and looking at it, I, my first thing last time we met was, you know, zero would be a good thing to have. But looking at the amount that we've just added to the EMS, that's a minimal cost of providing a service to a community. And if we're going to say the EMS is caused, I don't think it caused, I mean, there's other departments, but a good chunk of it. But look at it, we're running in the, starting to run into the red. We're starting to get that money back from them. They're starting to pay us back, and a 1% is not bad. I, I would support the 1%. And I'm one to saying zero, would it be okay? But again, I look at what services are we providing in this community, and for 1%, $20, be it $40, providing an ambulance service. And as we continue to expand, we may get more revenue, which then, I think next year is going to be potentially more problematic than what we have. This time here is, again, what level of service do we want to provide in ambulance? I've always supported ambulance, I always will support it, as the other departments, police, and the DPW, and library. But I know we're talking about a lot about the ambulance. You look at $3, that we bumped that. Typically, you go a little smaller. You're going like $1, $2, $3. We went kind of a big jump to catch up because we have not done that. And if that amount of money is of concern, well, then, I think next year's going to even be worse. I mean, as far as potentially, what is, what are we facing as far as financially, money coming in? So, I'll support, I'll support with the 1, was it 1.09?
1.09.
1.09% as presented.
Anything you want to add, Chuck, or? Okay. You good yet?
Yeah.
Mike? All right. So, it looks like one...
So, this is, the, the next page, then, if we flip to the next page, is the, it's what I was talking about last week, this publication. We had, you know, I know it's not finalized until next meeting. It's a public hearing. So, certainly, I appreciate the discussion. This is what was posted in the paper Friday, last Friday. So, it's had to be 15 days prior to our public hearing, which is November 16th. So, this is what was posted in the paper. It can change slightly. So, this is what we had kind of had agreed upon last meeting down at the bottom. The, the last, the, the overall levy rate is simply an estimate based on our best guess at the time. It's, it will change slightly because of the other entities, but what won't change would be our, our 914, 924. The rest of the numbers are all, are all in there. That was the publication. So, I don't have a lot to say about that besides just showing you the document. And then, the next document, and at, at some point, if, if there's any questions, I guess I didn't mention, but throughout the other, the police, the library, any of the other departments throughout the budget process, we've tried to, I think, finish the discussions about all of those throughout the process, and I don't think there was anything out, left, hanging there. The department heads are here if there's any questions about that. But then, I started, I put this document together last year, this pie chart, and I, we included it in the tax bills last year, and I plan on doing that again. And I, I do think this does a very good job of representing what your tax dollars are going to for. So, just to kind of give you the basis for it, 100, I know you can read, but I'm just going to walk through. A $100,000 home, based on, this first page, number 19, is from the 2020 budget from last year's. And it's based on a monthly bill for that home. We just, I think it's a good representation. You pay everything by the month. You pay your phone bill and everything else. So, this is what, if you have a $100,000 home, last year, per month, you were paying $76.17 to the village, just to the village for our services. And these are the services we're providing for that. And it kind of shows you where your money's getting split up. Moving that then to the next page, on page 20, is the same pie chart for this budget that we're talking about right now. It bumps that up from $76.17, 83 cents up per month to $77. If you do the math, 83 times 12, that should work out real close to that $10. And you'll notice, I mean, you can start seeing the difference there. So, that EMS, if you look at that, that dollar amount, 665 last year, this year, it's up to 736. So, you can kind of see those changes, and this, this will probably be more beneficial as we start getting five and 10 years and be able to look back and see where things are, are going in trends, things like that. So, if there's any, if there's not any objections, I would include this in the tax bills again this year. I think it, it helps.
Question on the library, one.
Yep.
I mean, there's, it shows us that 9% of the, the tax levy, whatever, is the library compared to the, let's use the police, the 16. There's no way that it's, I don't understand how that it can be close, because there's no way that we spend half as much as on the library as the police. I mean, the library's budget's about 150, 200,000, and then, the police is a million one, million two. I just, I don't understand the percentages. Do you understand what I'm saying there?
I, I do understand what you're saying. I, I have a very large spreadsheet that builds this, and I'll, I can't answer your question right now. I'm just thinking.
Because I mean, library's such a sliver, should be just a sliver compared to everybody else, you know?
You have a good point. I, I'm not, I don't have a good answer for you right now.
What's a library doing with all the money?
Is this just the general fund or something? Is that, whether, is there a different funding?
No, this is just the general, it's meant to be just the general fund. I don't have a good answer for you right now. I'm just trying to think of what we give the EMS fund is about the same, isn't it?
Well, that's what I was thinking, Nick. Since your revenue is totally levy, where in the general fund, do we have other forms of revenue that come in?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's just, yeah, we're, all we're talking about here is the actual levy amount, which is the $1.5 million that we collected for tax revenue. Okay? So, what portion of that is, and if you think about that, 1.5 million, 150,000 approximately is going to the library. So, that is above 10%.
Okay.
So...
How much is going to the police?
Could be probably one and a half. I, I, I don't want to start trying to blur out numbers here, but...
It just looks out of...
I understand what you're saying, but it's, it is related to what Chris just said. It has to do with, with, we're talking about levy amount, and what we're actually, that $1.5 million of levy that we collect, how we're splitting that up. We have a lot of different other revenue streams, but that's a portion that's actually getting put to the police department. So, the police department's not getting that full, isn't all coming from levy. There's other revenue streams.
Like, tell them shared revenue? I mean, you'd think you would also take it across everybody, the library and, and public work.
This is what, if you look at the publication document right here, that's our tax levy, that's what it's going to.
Yeah. I just, I just didn't, it doesn't ring bell.
That is, I mean, this is true. I'm pretty confident that this is a correct representation of the $1.5 million of levy that we, how we apply it to our, our local budget. And I, I'll dig into it a little bit more. I don't want to gather too much tonight in thought and trying to figure that out without having my spreadsheet available to me.
All right, thank you.
Okay. With that, the next page of my binder is the budget schedule, because I put it in the front. And that would be, the next meeting would be our, our public hearing and adoption for all of this. That generally isn't a lot of discussion and more of the formality of adopting it unless there's anything outstanding. If there's not any further questions, I guess, about the budget, or if any of the department hasn't had anything about their budgets or any updates, we can conclude our, our discussion, I guess.
Any other questions for Nick? All right, all right. Thanks, Nick. Thanks for everybody for sticking around. All right. Moving down to H, ordinance discussion and possible action on ordinance 2020-7, and ordinance annexing territory in the village of Norfondalak, W 6702, Winnebago Street, first reading.
I can summarize that. Pete's got it right up in here. We've got the actual application and everything. That was, so, this home out of Winnebago Street is, is kind of one of the, one of very few that out there that are still in the town. I think the home sold, and the septic was failing during the sale. They wanted to hook into our sewer. We obviously required them to annex, and they hooked into our sewer and water. And this is kind of the formality process. The plant commission did make a recommendation to approve annexation. We've already allowed them to hook up with sewer and water internally. We've allowed them to do that. They are hooked up at this point. And this is the first reading, and then, next, next time would be the public hearing and the final adoption of this. So, this would just be accepting that eventually, when we adopt the ordinance, is to accept that annexation into the village.
All right. Anybody have any questions on this ordinance? Chuck?
Maybe that's left on the ordinance. Do you have that jet diagram of where that property actually is?
It's, it's, it's in your packet.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
Winnebago, it comes down as kind of a name along the street.
So, that's the right-ofway. As you get it closer to that intersection, that right-ofway gets really wide. Because of the intersection of the... Because you can't see it there, but just to the left in your picture is, is the, the big intersection up there with the traffic signal. Yeah. So, anytime you get into those larger intersections with county roads, a lot of times, the right-ofways will widen out to provide room for a roundabout or, you know, things like that in the future.
Anybody else? All right. First reading, no action required. All right. Closed session. Need a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session for discussion of a personal issue under Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, subsection 1, subsection C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data or any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, I A F F L E A, L E E R, and S O R D union contracts, and job descriptions, and pay grade discussion.
I got a second?
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion by Price, second by Horning to go into closed session. Get a roll call, please.
Duffy?
Yes.
Morning?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Will?